Welcome to our special school committee meeting of March 12. And tonight we'll be presenting our budget to the town. And in order to start, we need a motion to open.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, school committee?
Aye.
Aye, and we are officially open.
We're going to public hearing.
Isn't that, is that what I just did, or did I not say public hearing? Okay, public hearing, we're good.
All set?
All set?
Yes.
Yep, so Mr. Shea and I will go through the slides of the budget presentation for the FY 26 budget. But we're hoping that this is more of a conversation, so certainly as we go through the slides, if you have any questions, stop us along the way and we can talk about them as we go through the slides, as opposed to you trying to hold on to the information until the end. So, the first slide we have for you, we felt it was important to share with not only all of you here, but members of the community, all the work and time and effort that goes into putting this budget together. So although we still have a ways to go through the process, meeting with the finance committee and the board of selectmen and ultimately town meeting, all the dates you see on the right-hand side are the dates that we've met, Mr. Shea and myself have met with the budget subcommittee, consisting of Chair McKinnon, Ms. DePica, and Ms. Furia, and then Mr. Walsh from the finance committee dedicated a lot of his time to join us and give us some thoughts and feedback to consider as well. So we appreciate those efforts. And so here we are tonight to share all that we've done since November.
We begin with the meeting with finance and select board, we're doing on the 24th.
Is that, was that on there? I don't know if that option is on.
Yeah, there's no date on there.
Okay, so the 24th, we'll have that joint meeting. There's a copy of the presentation if you'd like.
David, we'll be putting in a capital request for.
Go ahead.
So as we look at our budget each year, certainly our centralized focus is the work of the school district, and that's making sure that we're staying true to our mission and that we're looking at our student population from where we want them by the time they graduate. So we started this vision of the graduate a few years back, and certainly when we're making decisions, particularly budgetary decisions, we want to make sure that we use these as the roadmap so that we can accomplish the goals we have set for students, so that then as they graduate, they're ready for college and career. So you'll see the mission statement of the district, as well as the elements of vision of a graduate. The strategic plan is what we do every day to get to that endpoint of making sure we have fulfilled our mission and our students are prepared to graduate. So you've heard over the last three years that we've given updates at school committee meetings about our strategic plan. It was a three-year plan, it had three pillars, what we felt as an administrative team were the three essential components of making sure that our students are college and career-ready. And we put social emotional wellness as our number one goal, because we felt without taking care of our students' wellbeing, they weren't coming to school prepared and ready to learn, and essentially not being able to master the skills that they needed to be ready to graduate. So as our strategic plan, we focus on the social emotional wellness of students, we focus on strong instruction, which has a lot to do with the professional development that we provide for our staff, as well as the curriculum and resources that we provide. And then certainly we want to make sure what we're doing is having an impact and students are actually making progress. So this is singular, because we constantly want to make sure that we keep revisiting all of these things, making sure that students are coming to school prepared, ready to learn, they're getting quality instruction with high-level effective resources, and when we monitor and assess them, we can see the proof of all that happening. So we felt it was important to have these slides first before we start talking in, talking about the budget, because this is the centralized focus of all the decisions that we make, especially in difficult budget years, like we're faced this year, where reductions might need to be made, we want to make sure to keep these things intact as much as possible. So those reductions need to be very thoughtful and calculated to make sure they have the least amount of negative impact on students. This next slide really talks about the challenges that we're faced with as a district, but more importantly, the challenges that we're faced with really in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think a lot of times when we talk about budget and possible reductions in budget, I think the first thing that comes to mind for a lot of people is mismanagement. And so we felt it's important to share this and make sure that everyone is well aware of what are the challenges that are actually impacting our abilities to provide the level of services we want, with the funding that needs to go along with it. So I won't read to you, but certainly these are some extreme components, the increase in costs for out-of-district tuitions, transportation, not really having control over those, those are just costs that we absorb, and they can go up at percent levels that are way beyond what we can handle. The other thing is our Chapter 70 funding, so certainly that's the majority of funding that come to public schools, and the funding that we get, the percentage is not matching the inflation percentage. So about 4% increase in capital in Chapter 70, when we're trying to chase 8-9% increases with inflation, which certainly makes it difficult. And then lastly, with the pandemic, certainly we had extra funding coming to the district that could support mostly our social emotional needs of our students, but certainly that funding has now started to dry up, and we're trying to retain those positions, knowing that they're still just as important as they were the day we brought them onto the budget. And then turn it over to Mr. Shea, who's going to share with us some of the driving forces of our budget.
So this, for comparative purposes, this shows the per pupil expenditure. It's 2003 data, that's the latest data that DESI publishes. The other towns, or peer towns, or other towns with a similar number of students, they're closely, the location is within 26 miles of us, and similar average household income. You can see we, at 16,276, we are less than all of our peers except for one. I mean, the purpose of showing you this is that we wanted to show that we are not overspending, we don't feel like we're overspending, we feel like we're fiscally responsible, and we're managing our finances to the best of our abilities. This slide shows our budget by the different categories. You can see, well, it's hard to see, but salary makes up 75% of our budget. Special education tuitions and transportation make up 12% of our budget. So those two categories alone make up almost 90% of our budget. Aggie schools tuition and transportation, that makes up 1%, homeless and foster care transportation makes up 1% of our budget. Other special education services and supplies, another 1%, athletics and music is 1% of our budget. Technology and digital curriculum make up 2% of our budget, and all other expenses make up another 2% of our budget. Regular busing makes up 4% of our budget. And remember, we're going to talk briefly about the two largest components here on the next couple of slides. So the salary budget, included in our salary budget are the impact of existing collective bargaining agreements, all individual employee agreements that aren't part of a collective bargaining agreements, and also a projection of the impact for one current collective bargaining agreement, that's currently in negotiations. In this budget, we've included a reduction of 18 positions in the school district. As a result of some of these reductions, we are projecting a class size increase for core classes, those are classes that are not elected, increasing on average from 19 to 22. And you can see our district enrollment has dropped since 2019, it's dropped a couple hundred, hundred since 2024, or we held steady in 2025, and next year's projection, I'm estimating a enrollment of 2020. So another slide in this next year. This slide just kind of explains our challenges that we have with special education tuition and transportation costs. When we budget for tuitions and transportation, it's by student, we know where the students are going, we know where they're projected to go. Jay Fallon in the special ed department gives, we work together on that information. Every student that goes to a public school program, the cost to the school dri, us, the school district is 40,000 to 45,000. Collaborative school tuition, the cost is 55,000 to 70,000. A private day school, 75,000 to 191,000, and those students that need private residential school with can cost anywhere from 300,000 to 400,000 per student. Transportation costs again varies also, depends on the student need and the distance traveled. Projected cost ranges per student are anywhere from 17,000 to 86,000. We, and you can see over the last five, six years, we, every year, there's an increase in special ed tuitions and transportation. The large increase this year is due to the projected decrease in circuit breaker relief we'll be receiving. We've hit the max that we can file for extraordinary relief circuit breakers, so that all falls to our operational budget. Here is the proposed budget, it's by the different categories that we talked about earlier. Salary, we're looking, in the green column is our proposed budget tonight, we're looking at $172,000 increase in salary. Special ed tuitions and transportations, that makes up one, almost 1.4 million increase in the budget. Aggie and the culture schools, those are the students from East Bridgewater that attend Norfolk and Bristol County. Aggie, we're budgeting one less student attending next year, that's why you see your induction there. Homeless and foster care transportation, I budgeted that flat. Other special education services, those are services like site services, PT, OT, speech, vision services, hospital tutoring, things like that, we're projecting an increase of 25,000 in that area. Athletics and music, we have a $30,000 increase, that's related to the increase in transportation, and also the increase that the MIAA just accepted for officials, umpires and referees, they're giving them a 7% increase. Technology and digital curriculum, we, we've done a good job in that area, we've held that flat. That is all the, you know, majority of our, or a lot of our curriculum now is digital, that's what's included in that. Technology is the Chromebooks, the laptops, touch views, I budgeted a replacement of 18 touch views, we did 18 last year, I budgeted another 18 this year. Student information system, backup system, firewall, cybersecurity, that's all included in that number. All other expenses are all the classroom supplies, office supplies, copier leases and things like that. And actually, we did a good job on our copier lease contract, so that's what makes up a lot of, a lot of that $32,000 decrease. Busing, that's our regular busing with Lucini, that contract is going to go up 61,800.
So you can see from the previous page that we do have an expected budget, that is about 1.5 million more, that at this point in time, we have reduced 18 tuitions in the budget. The enrollment slide was there to show you that our decisions were based on that decrease in enrollment, so as we're making those recommendations for reductions, we're looking at class size and making sure that even though it would go up with reductions, it would still be at that below average to average level. However, based on the school committee's decisions, there may be further reductions that need to be made to close that 1.5 million dollar gap, and this is what we've come up with as other possible scenarios. There is funding in our school choice account that could be applied. We provide busing now legally, we need to provide busing to all students K to 6 that are over 2 miles, and then we have a paid program for all students under 2 miles and our 7 through 12 students over 12, over 2 miles. So we're not obligated to bus any students that are under 2 miles, or any of our 7 through 12 grade past students. So reducing that obviously would be a potential cost savings. Building principals are here today, we met yesterday, certainly that has other implications at the buildings, with many more students being dropped off and picked up, but certainly from a budgetary standpoint, it is a consideration, and then looking at staffing to see if there's additional reductions that could be made there.
How much is in the school choice fund? A little over 700,000.
So that's not a long-term solution for it yet.
That is not a long-term solution.
So we also wanted to add capital, so I'll let Mr. Shea talk about the first couple of things, and then I'll share with you the partnerships with MSBA.
So we submitted two capital projects to the capital committee in the town, both of them at the high school, junior senior high school. The atrium kiln replacement and ventilation improvements, that's a, that's a safety issue. We need, that is probably a utmost priority that needs to be fixed. The auditorium stage four replacement, we've tried to repaint that over the years, that also just needs to be replaced.
The last two items are the building projects, one for Central School and one for Mitchell School. We are partnered with the Mass School Building Authority, organization that helps to offset the cost of these projects. There is a process that every district needs to go through in order to be invited in. Many districts apply, only some get invited in. Sometimes it might take years to get invited in, so you need to take advantage of the opportunities when you are invited in. So you have a large project, you submit to the MSBA for consideration, they meet with the district, they come out to visit the district, because they want to make sure that they're going to get the best return on their investment, and make sure that districts are committed to these projects, and making sure that the money that goes into these projects are well-maintained. So it was, with both of the projects, it's been a couple of years now, because it does take time to go through the entire process. But for Central School, we're looking at a building project for Central School, the committee meets on a regular basis, we are in the schematic design phase, looking at what the building would look like, where the building would be located, whether we're better off with a new build versus an addition renovation project. So that's ongoing with an expected timeline of going to a special town meeting in November of 2025 for that funding. Coincidentally, and a little unfortunate, the timeframe that MSBA has put us on for our accelerated repair program for a roof and windows at Mitchell School puts us on almost a similar timeframe, obviously with an accelerated repair program, they're expecting that we go through this process a lot quicker than a new building. So we were invited in to the project, we got funding for a feasibility study in January at a special town meeting, so that's where we are right now. But after receiving the contract from the owners' project manager and the architect design firm, it's looking like we'll get approval to move forward to the town for our September special town meeting. So the timing is not great to go to the town within two months looking for monies for these projects. So we are looking into the possibility of extending the timeline for the middle school, the Mitchell School roof project, but making sure it's still within the timeframe that the money that's being spent on a feasibility study right now would not expire. So more information to come on that, but in having conversations with Mr. Seeling, our town administrator, and Melanie Dean, Brian Kylie Facilities, we're working together to see if we can separate these two projects out to relieve some of that burden on the community. So really, this is just, you know, us showing our appreciation for the collaborative efforts that have gone on, and as I shared at the beginning, we've worked collectively as a group, the building principals have also been involved in making sure that we're making thoughtful decisions. decisions. They're the closest to their buildings and the needs of their students and staff, so we definitely want to be thoughtful in all of our decisions. Like I said at the beginning, this is a conversation, looking for input, suggestions, comments, so that we can best support our students as well as being responsible to our community. With that, I will open it up if anyone has questions or comments.
Gina, with the class size is going up, is that across all schools or was that focused on the high school level or something?
All schools, yes. So the reductions would impact all schools, so enrollment was looked at, at those. And when we met with principals, they looked at particular grade levels that it would best work for. So it's not a straight shot with every grade level.
They got monitored to work.
There was a legislative breakfast held this morning, so South Shore's and the superintendent's association, and our state reps and senators were at the breakfast. Like I said, the theme was common across, you know, all the districts in the Commonwealth. So we're sharing our concerns with them, hoping that they're having conversations as well. They didn't have any good news for us, but we had breakfast.
So Senator Brady was there?
He was. Yeah, Catherine Mullen was there on behalf of Rep. Sullivan Almeida.
There's another legislative meeting, the division that we are in, Massachusetts Association School of Business later this month, so we'll go to that, I'll go to that. Other people I'll talk to, just as Gina said, particularly with regard to the cost for special ed and all those things going up higher, everybody's in that mode. Everyone's struggling to figure out. You can see from the numbers that John put up there, how dramatically higher they are projected for next year even versus this year, even though we've been steadily going up. So that's not exclusive, these Bridgewater, it's across the board. Obviously, every district has different numbers, but same kind of dramatic increase. But we're going to hope, well, certainly want to make sure the legislators understand that, and hopefully they can find some relief for us.
Is that just school committees?
Got to go into that one just then?
Yes. Because I was hoping to have a finance meeting with representative of some of the
I think as many times as we can have a conversation with them.
Okay. John, can you explain to us, I think we reached on max on the circuit breaker, but the circuit breaker was supposed to fix every day years ago.
So there's different types of circuit breaker. Cert, I call it regular circuit breaker. We haven't reached our max. So we will still be receiving additional reimbursement as our costs go up for the normal circuit breaker. Extraordinary relief circuit breaker is for those years where your cost just goes through the roof, the, and it goes above 25%, 125% of the prior year, you'll get some relief. And that relief is in this year. We're filing for extraordinary relief circuit breaker right now.
For 2024.
For 2025. So at some point, our costs are not going to go up 125% of the prior year, and that's what we're projecting fiscally at 26. So.
It's not going to go up more than 125%.
It's not going to go up around 125%. Based upon my projection, working with Jay.
So 1.4 million is not more than 125%?
Well, 300,000 of that is special ed transportation. 400,000, no, 600,000 of that is a drop in extraordinary relief circuit breaker, and then you've got 300,000 increase in tuitions to make up the 1.4. So what, just remember, when I budget for special ed tuitions, it's net of circuit breaker. So a decrease in extraordinary relief circuit breaker of 600,000 goes right to our bottom,
If there's no other questions, we'll turn it back over to you, Mr. McKinnon.
Well, I'd echo that. If there's no other questions, we're done with the presentation. Where our, sure you don't remember, but on the beginning, we, when Gina put up the dates we're meeting as the budget subcommittee, we still have a number of meetings to go through. Technically, we have to certify our budget. We're, right now, it's on schedule to certify next week. Look at how many days we have to kind of play around with that. We have to have it certified 45 days before the town meeting. And so between the budget subcommittee and talking with the town, talking with Charlie and Melanie, we'll see what else we can come up with as far as what our numbers will look like at the, the end of the day, because obviously the town has a budget they have to make, and they're faced with their own challenges this year with retirement funding that they have to, we have to address, much higher than typically have done. So the whole town is sort of kind of scrambling for that. And where we see a part of the town, not only every part of the town, we're probably the biggest component of the town's budget. So we're trying to work, for the number of years I've been on the committee, I, I feel good that we've worked collaboratively, particularly this year, but we have over, overall, in general. But this year in particular, we've invited everybody we can to the table to help us solve the problem, because, yes, we have the responsibility to educate our, our students, but we have to do that within fiscal confines or the fiscal abilities of the town, and that's not always easy to do. With that, I would take a motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. And we are complete. Thank you. Thanks Gina.